Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of the next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. By approving the consent agenda, the Commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item, by first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or please silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 10:00 AM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. This January 6th Planning Commission meeting. Happy New Year. As we always do, we'll start with Denise reading the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item one, approval of December 2nd, 2015, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, December Platts. Item three, 2358, 2015, rezone from AG Agriculture District and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the CN Conservation RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts for loud forms located north of West 41st Street and west of South T Ellis Road. Item four, 3867, 2015, rezone from the LW Live Work District to the O Office District for loud forms located at the northeast corner of South Hosta Avenue and East 57th Street. Item five, 3898, 2015, rezone from POPUD District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District for loud forms located west of North Marion Road, east of West Yukon Trail, and north of West Benson Road. Item six, 3938, 2015, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban, LW Live Work and CN Conservation Districts for loud forms located west of South Sycamore Avenue and between East 61st and East 65th Streets.
All right, thank you Denise. Are there any objections from anyone in the audience on items number one through six? All right, seeing none, are there any objections from the Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I will be excusing myself from the consent agenda items this evening.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. If you're here for items number one through six, you're free to leave. We'll go to the regular agenda. Need a motion to approve the regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. The regular agenda is approved. We'll start with item number seven.
3937, 2015, conditional use permit in the RE3 form to allow an automotive drive-through area adjacent to a DD farm located at the southwest corner of West 53rd Street and South Louise Avenue.
Jason Bieber representing Planning and Building Services, this is an application by Brent Antonin. The applicant is planning on constructing a fast food restaurant on the site that's currently zoned C2 commercial. This fast food restaurant is proposing to have a drive-up service window. This drive-up service window and stacking area will be located adjacent to the existing single-family home to the south. It is located at 4601 South Louise Avenue, which is the southwest corner of West 53rd Street and South Louise. The submitted concept plan does indicate the required 10-foot front yard setbacks. They also are indicating the 20-foot level C buffer yard on the south side of the lot. However, they are not indicating their required four-foot fence and two-foot berm and 40 units of landscaping. The proposed fast food restaurant with drive-through does meet the comprehensive plan. This property, or these three properties are currently zoned C2 commercial, and the proposed use should be compatible with the other commercial, excuse me, uses within the 57th and Louise commercial area. The required level C buffer yard, including that four-foot fence and two-foot berm on the south side, plus the 40 units of landscaping, should minimize the impact of the existing single-family residential use to the south. If this application is approved, the applicant can construct the fast food restaurant with the indicated drive-through and stacking area, and if this application would be denied, a restaurant could still go there, however, they would not be able to orientate the drive-through and stacking areas toward the existing single-family residential use to the south. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and intent of the work provided, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks Jason. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Madam Chair. Jason, you said the drawings do not show the fence and the berm, or the fence and the landscaping units, but that is required, right?
Yep, and that area kind of on the right side of this drawing, you can see kind of the setback area. That will be required within that 20-foot, and it will be that four-foot fence, two-foot berm, and then the 40 units of landscaping as part of this, as part of the building permit that will have to be shown and then constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for us?
Madam Chair. Jason, you mentioned that with this conditional use, they could have the drive-through window, but if not, it just couldn't orient towards the existing single-family, so they could still have a drive-through window, it'd just have to be...
Yep, they would, they could still have it if they positioned their building in a different way. I don't know how it would necessarily work on the lot, but as long as that drive-through area and stacking spaces isn't adjacent on the, essentially, the south side of this lot, they could still have it.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, oh Madam Chair, it talks about this buffer yard being along the north property line, would that not be the south property line?
Yeah, that was a misprint in there. It is along the south property line. If we go back to the aerial, you can kind of see those, the two houses that are in the blacked area are, have been demolished, removed, and then there's that one existing house just to the south of this area, and then the existing open area that's currently zoned office.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, thanks Jason. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Brent Antonin, 222 South Main.
Do you have anything to add, Brent?
Not at this time.
Okay, Commissioners, any question for Brent? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? It's okay, we're not that scary. If you could please state your name and address.
My name is Dennis Nelson, 4631, South Louise Avenue, or 4613, I'm the, we're the house on the south of there. And he's talking about putting up a fence along there so the headlights don't come into our rooms, I guess. We don't have any trouble with that because we have a cement, our driveway goes into there and into garage, so there's no lights coming into our house where, we live on the second floor of the building, so we wouldn't have any problem with that. And as far as the fence, we have Japanese yew bushes, they're about 12 feet tall, so I would like to be able to get on the other side to trim them whenever possible, so a fence right up against those bushes would be a problem. So, however they've planned it, I don't know. And is exit going to be on to Louise Avenue?
I'm sorry, oh, I didn't understand the question.
It's going back to 53rd Street, or come in on 53rd and go back out?
All right, I can't really hear you, can you just lean into the microphone a little bit?
It's going in 53rd and coming out 53rd, not on Louise Avenue?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so then I, we have no problem as homeowner.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But there's no such word as what kind of restaurant this is going to be?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
We don't know that, okay.
Nope.
Well, any question that you can ask me?
I hope it's one you like.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair, can, Jason, can you come up for just a second? With his thoughts on the fence not being right next to the bushes, with the berm and everything, I'm assuming it's going to be, it won't be right on the property line, it'll be a little ways away?
Yeah, the ordinance specifically addresses that the fence can't be on the property line, so it's going to have to be set back a little bit. Doesn't say a specific amount, but usually, you know, it has to be, it can't be right on the line, so there'll be some space in there.
All right, so we should have no problems trimming the trees?
No.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Madam Chair, move to approve number seven.
You have a motion? A second? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the motion passes. Thank you.
Item eight, 3891, 2015, alternative site plan to provide an alternative landscape plan located at 4701 Northwest Port Avenue.
The applicant here is Brian Janz, the owner of this property is Feeding, South Dakota. The applicant is requesting to place the required front yard trees, street trees adjacent to the parking lot instead of the required front yard setback. As you can see by the site plan here, it's located, the parking lot and building are setback quite a ways from Northwest Port Avenue. The applicant also indicates that growing trees within this required front yard setback will be difficult because of the extreme elevation changes, and also the steep slope, and he can also see easement running through that front yard. It is located at 4701 Northwest Port Avenue. This specific site is required one tree for every... This specific site is required one tree for every 50 feet of frontage for a total of seven trees, which they have provided, they're actually providing nine trees. The only thing is they are required to be within that first 20 feet, according to the ordinance. They are proposing to place nine trees to the east of the proposed parking lot, so technically in the front yard, but not in the front yard setback, and that's specifically because of the significant elevation changes and steep slopes within the front yard. The applicant is proposing to place these nine trees within the front yard, however, not within that 20-foot setback. Staff does feel that the proposed location of the required front yard trees still meets, provides the screening of the parking lot and the building from West Port Avenue, and does meet the intent of the landscape ordinance. If the proposed alternative site plan is approved, the applicant can, can place the trees within the front yard adjacent to the parking lot, but not in the setback. If this application is denied, then they would have to place those trees within the required 20-foot front yard setback. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this specific application, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks Jason, any questions for Jason? All right, thanks. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Brian Janz, 600 East 52nd Street North.
Do you have anything to add?
Nope, just answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions?
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for Commission action.
Move for approval on item number eight. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item nine, 2359, 2015, preliminary subdivision plan for Westwood Valley II addition located north of West 41st Street and west of T Ellis Road.
Madam Chair, I will be excusing myself for this particular item.
The applicant here is Damian Grebel. It is a preliminary subdivision plan for the Westwood Valley Second Edition. The applicant is proposing to subdivide 79 acres for single-family and twin-home residential uses along for some conservation area. This application originally, when it was sent out, this staff report, there was still a major task that needed to be completed with engineering. Since that time, they have completed that task, so all items have been completed and this has been accepted in sire, so we can now change that recommendation to approval. And because this preliminary subdivision plan application is now complete and offers coordination of urban infrastructure and fosters efficient and effective and orderly urban growth, staff does recommend approval now of this specific preliminary subdivision plan.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, will the applicant please come forward?
Damian Grebel, Earhart Griffin and Associates, 300 North Dakota Avenue. I don't have anything else to add at this time unless you guys have any questions for me. I could answer those, but would approve a recommendation.
All right, thanks Damian. Any questions for the applicant? All right.
All right, thank you.
Guess not, thanks. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve item number nine.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item 10, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls.
This is an application by the City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. As we're all aware, we've been under the Shape Places zoning ordinance for, be a year in April. I think this will be our second, is our second or third revision to it. So I'll quickly run through some of the items that we are proposing to revise. The first one is, is the determination that there only can be one form per lot of record. Second, we are adding the BCF3 form to the Live-Work District. It was in the bulk regulations as being allowed, however, it was not in the front area under Live-Work as being allowed, so we're just kind of making those consistent. We're correcting some bulk regulations within the RE3 form. We're removing the MD, MD form, which is apartments essentially, from the exemptions of not requiring trees. So now apartment residential developments, multiple dwelling developments will be required, the front yard and interior trees, and the only ones that will be exempt now are single-family and twin-home, which it's been for, forever. We are, we are also adding, adding a provision that the increase in dwelling units, if it's over 20%, would also, our kick-in, the requirement to provide the required buffer yards. We've had a couple instances of multifamily adding a bunch of units. That would have been over that 20% increase, but then they were not required to provide the buffer yard, so we figure this will, will require them to do the necessary landscaping. So, because the subject ordinance amendment is in compliance with the Shape Sioux Falls, staff does recommend approval of this ordinance amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on it.
All right, does anyone have any questions for staff? All right, thanks Jason. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the ordinance passes.
Move to adjourn.
No, we have. Thank you for that Commissioner, but we have the election of officers, which I don't want to overlook. So I need a motion.
I would move that we cast a unanimous ballot for Steve Gasper as Chair and Kurt Johnson as Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on that nomination? Are you good with, all right. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned.